Okay, welcome to our first business meeting of March. Today is March 10th, 2025. We entered into closed session earlier this afternoon. And now we're back out and ready to continue with business. We will begin with a moment of silence if you'd like to join us. Thank you. At this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The first thing on our agenda tonight are public comments in which there are no signups for that, so we will now close public comments at this time and move on to action items. And we'll begin with a motion to approve the minutes. And board members, if there was a motion to approve all three sets, that would be fabulous.
I move we accept the minutes as presented from February 20th, 2025, February 24th, 2025, and February 27th, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who's got that, Ms. Cave? Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes for February 20, 24, and 27 of 2025, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next on our list are some field trips. Dr. Shiflett, I believe you have that one.
Yes, Chair Hurston, board members, I have one field trip for your consideration. Wilbur S. Pence Middle School Honor Choir, April 24th through the 26th, three students to Richmond. And I do recommend approval of this field trip.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion to follow his recommendation? Thank you, Mr. Cross. How about a second? Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Any discussions or comments? All those in favor, say yes. Yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion to approve the field trips as presented passes five zero. Next up on our action items is a policy revision.
Chair Hurston, board members, I recommend approval of the proposed policy revision as presented. This is policy B C F. It was presented last meeting as information.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the proposed policy as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say yes. Yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion to approve the proposed policy revision passes five zero. Next, oh, Dr. Shiflett, you're just going to keep rolling.
Yes, I have.
Next up, a series of books.
I have a series of books, seven books. So we'll start with the first one. Chair Hurston, board members, upon review by the Content Review Committee in accordance with R C P S policy I I A B B, I recommend removing Red, White, and Royal Blue by Casey McWilston because the book contains sexually explicit content as that term is defined in R C P S's policy I I A B A.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Any discussion? All those in favor of following the superintendent's recommendation to remove Red, White, and Royal Blue, please signify by saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes five zero.
Chair Hurston, board members, upon review by the Content Review Committee in accordance with R C P S policy I I A B B, I recommend retaining Felix Ever After by Kason Kandler as the book does not contain sexually explicit content as that term is defined in R C P S policy I I A B A.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move to remove Felix Ever After by Kason Callender as this book does contain sexually explicit content as that term is defined in R C P S policy I I A B A.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any discussion from board members?
Just for public record, explicit content was found on pages 200, 255, and 256 of that book.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of removing Felix Ever After, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passes four one.
Chair Hurston, board members, excuse me. Chair Hurston, board members, upon review by the Content Review Committee in accordance with R C P S policy I I A B B, I recommend retaining Stars in Their Eyes by Jessica Walton as the book does not contain sexually explicit content as that term is defined in R C P S policy I I A B A.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move to retain the book Stars in Their Eyes by Jessica Walton at the high school level only.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Board members, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of retaining Stars in Their Eyes at the high school only, please say yes. Yes? All those opposed, say no. Motion passes five zero.
Chair Hurston, board members, upon review by the Content Review Committee in accordance with R C P S policy I I A B B, I recommend retaining Fade by Lisa McCann as the book does not contain sexually explicit content as that term is defined in R C P S policy I I A B A.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move to remove the book Fade by Lisa McMahon as this book does contain sexually explicit content as that term is defined in R C P S policy I I A B A.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any discussion?
For public record, explicit content in this book can be found on pages 101 to 103 and 183, all the way through page 190.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of removing Fade, please say yes. Yes? All those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passes four one.
Chair Hurston, board members, upon review by the Content Review Committee in accordance with R C P S policy I I A B B, I recommend removing Tilt by Ellen Hopkins because the book contains sexually explicit content as that term is defined in R C P S policy I I A B A.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. How about a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say yes. Yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes five zero.
Chair Hurston, board members, upon review by the Content Review Committee in accordance with R C P S policy I I A B B, I recommend removing Tricks by Ellen Hopkins because the book contains sexually explicit content as that term is defined in R C P S policy I I A B A.
Thank you. Board members, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. How about a second? I feel like I'm running an auction here. Any discussion? All those in favor of removing Tricks, please say yes. Yes? All those opposed, say no. Motion passes five zero. One more.
Chair Hurston, board members, upon review by the Content Review Committee in accordance with R C P S policy I I A B B, I recommend retaining The Duff by Cody Keplinger as the book does not contain sexually explicit content as that term is defined in R C P S policy I I A B A.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Do I hear a motion?
I move to remove the book The Duff by Cody Keplinger as this book does contain sexually explicit content as that term is defined in R C P S policy I I A B A.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Board members, any?
I'll give that discussion.
Board members, any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is it, right here.
Sorry. For public record, the explicit content pages can be found on page 34, 52, and 53, 65 through 68, 75, 83, 91, 95, 105 to 106, 131 to 132, 138, 148 to 149, 165, 167 to 168, 176 to 177, and 224 to 225.
Any other discussion? We have a motion to remove The Duff. All those in favor, say yes. Yes? All those opposed, say no. Motion passes four one. That wraps up our action items for this evening. Next up on our agenda are two information items. And we'll start off with a Rockingham County Special Education Report given to us by Mr. Chris Bryant.
I'm going to let the team get up here real quick before we start.
Will you introduce your team to us?
Yes, I will. That was part of my plan.
Oh, good.
So Chair Hurst, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett, thank you, first of all, for offering an opportunity for special education to present, brag about our department, what we do for special education. we do for students and teachers and staff, families in Rockingham County public schools. Couple of school board meetings ago, our Special Education Advisory Committee presented kind of an update on special education from the parent's point of view. And I appreciate Amber Hamm, our president of the CAC, sharing that information. We have some CAC members here tonight, and we want to just follow up with some additional data that I think supports their focus for our department. So like to introduce you to the dream team. This is the dream team. From my childhood, anyway, that was the USA Basketball Team. We have Ms. Carrie Wilburn. Carrie is on the West Side Supervisor for Special Education. Carrie was in schools this weekend, working and planning for a teacher who's out on leave. I mean, that's the kind of thing we've got going. Dr. Ashley Howe, out of district school placements. Ashley is fantastic with helping students who need more supports and our schools may not be able to provide it. So we appreciate Ashley. Ms. Sarah Wymer, East Side Supervisor, excellent. She's been known to be in an elementary school on the weekends, planning for a teacher who's out and we need lesson plans. So that's the kind of dream team we've got. Very proud and honored to be a part of it, and I'm going to get out of the way so I can show them off a little bit. But I'd like to recognize two more staff members. Jen Baker, if you raise your hand, Jen, come on. Excellent special ed teacher. We stole from Peak View. So sorry, Peak View, but she's been great for us with 504 student study, child study, and Ms. Sarah Foley, any student 14 to 21 years old, transition post-grad, they do a great job. So we started with a slide that just really represents what we're all about, and that is just some of our programs, the students and teachers and staff that we love and want to support. So we started out that way because we want the public, and you all to know how much it means to us to work for these young people. What I would say is tonight, we're going to share some information we're really proud of, some successes. We're going to share some challenges we feel we're facing just due to the natural course of growth in our department, and some data and some graphs that will be accurate information, and will help you be informed about maybe the future of our programs. So with that, first graph, the first graph is really what we call the December 1 count for the last couple of years. And for those who don't know, every year, we need to report to the state an accurate number of students who receive special education services. And in Rockingham County, you can see 2023, 2024, and our current today, today. So small stair-step growth, and kind of evidence shows you that we're 11% by the way of students with disabilities in our school division. 11% of our students have a disability. I want to read a couple of things on this slide. In addition to the current students noted in these graphs who are in our public school buildings, we have an additional 157 students served by special educators that include walk-in speech students under the age of five, grad class students, students served by a teacher in the home, students served in a daycare setting, and students served in private placements and residential settings. Additionally, our special educators support 38 students with individualized service plans and are either homeschooled or in private parochial schools. So there are another 157 students on the yellow that we make sure we provide for that don't come to our buildings. This is a graph of all 13 disability categories nationally that all public schools need to monitor and make sure we take care of. It's small. The main things that I would like you to know about this slide are it's a lot of even steady growth. There are a couple of disabilities that stand out with more significant growth, and I really want to talk about those and focus in on why we want to target that. So those are the four breakout disabilities. We have on the far left, speech-language impairment, other health impairment next, autism, and visual impairment are the four categories. Speech is increasing, and the need for speech-language pathologists is not going away. So we want to make sure we provide children with the speech-language services they need so they're intelligible and they can understand the spoken word. We will be looking at our speech-language pathologist need. Other health impairment, you might typically see that with students with attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. What we're seeing is more mental health needs, and we want to meet those needs. Anxiety, depression, and mental health needs are something that is very important that we make sure we address in addition to Liza Kaufman's department, who does a fabulous job with those mental health needs. Autism is on the rise nationally. We want to meet those needs. We have asked for more autism programs year to year. We've got this team here supporting teachers of students with autism, and it's growing. And then for some reason, we've had a swell in vision impairment. We've just had an increase, and our vision teachers do a great job, but I got to see a little guy at Pleasant Valley who types with Braille, and he's the cutest thing in the world. If you get a chance, go to Pleasant Valley and see that guy do his thing. It's awesome. And then they walk the building with his cane to make sure he can navigate the community that he goes to school in. So awesome stuff. So a couple of percentage points, and then I'll turn it over to the dream team. 15% increase in elementary students identified for students with disabilities from last year to this year, 15%. 13% increase in the students identified as having a speech-language impairment. 8% increase in students identified as having another health impairment. Again, that can be a health condition, ADHD, mental health challenges. 16% increase in students having autism. Autism is on the rise, and it's because we understand it better. 46% increase in students with vision impairment, and all other disability categories have maintained pretty steady. So now please hear from others, and we will continue to work hard every day regardless of what comes of our presentation, but we need you to know what we're asking for. Thank you.
So as the number of students with disabilities have increased in Rockingham County, and the needs of those students have continued to evolve, it's important that we be thinking about the ways that we can best meet those needs. As a special education leadership team, we've developed a three-year roadmap that will allow for high-quality outcomes for students while providing needed support for our teachers. As this has been a focus for Rockingham County, it has also been a focus for special education at the state level as well. Here you can see the special education roadmap from the Virginia Department of Education. While this roadmap is a continual loop, we recognize that all aspects of this map are vital to the outcomes of students. I'd like to start at the center or the heart of the roadmap with parental engagement. When a parent comes to one of our school buildings with concerns regarding their child, we begin to build a relationship that will continue through this child's life until they exit school services. It is important that we build a firm foundation. High-quality instruction, it is essential for a student to be able to develop skills to access the curriculum as designed and participate in their least restrictive environment. Inclusion, it allows students to participate with their peers for meaningful instruction to provide learning, improve learning outcomes. Monitoring, the purpose of monitoring are the checks and balances of the state and federal regulations. Our department oversees this for all special education students, and we report directly to the Department of Education. Post-secondary transition, within our department, Sarah Foley is instrumental in supporting students, parents, and staff regarding transitional needs for students. She works closely with families and a variety of community agencies. Finally, recruiting and retaining qualified staff to support our students continues to be at the forefront for R C P S. We continue working to grow our teachers' knowledge through professional development, mentorship, collaboration with Grow Your Own initiatives, and universities. Next, Ashley's going to come speak about our current staffing and data related to how we compare to other divisions within the state.
This is a visual representation of our division's special education leadership whereby we still have Chris as our director, and this is just kind of a reminder of what everyone has introduced. Myself, Sarah Wymer, and Carrie Wilburn are their supervisors for pupil personnel services, East Side Schools and West Side Schools. Jen Baker, new to our team, is a facilitator for P P S and Sarah Foley for transition services. We are the division leaders for all things special education, school health, and student This is a four-district comparison of similar-sized divisions with total enrollment and/or total identified special education enrollment using the December 1 count for the 2024-25 data available from V D O E. Each division's leadership staff is listed alongside Rockingham County for comparison. As well, the summarized number of leadership positions is noted at the bottom. All of this information is presented to demonstrate the need for additional support in the field to assist our increasing population of students being identified as students with disabilities. Right now, Carrie and Sarah are serving multiple roles as supervisors, mentors, and instructional coaches. The needs of our students are vast and more extensive than ever before. The needs of staff also require our attention as we're fortunate to have individuals fill the role of a special education teacher, but not all of these teachers are coming into our classroom adequately prepared and have experience working with students with special needs. Therefore, we are charged with equipping them with knowledge, skills, and resources to educate our students. All of this is to say we have reason to expand our department, offer our teachers and students the opportunities that they need and deserve. As you can see, there are some noticeable differences between Rockingham County's division's special education leaders and similar-sized divisions. It is our goal to enhance our department and add staff to our schools that can address the diversity of needs and strengthen the quality of our educators. This is a little more aesthetically pleasing visual. It represents the division's leadership teams. Rockingham is vastly smaller with fewer boots on the ground than our comparable divisions. According to Augusta County officials, next year, they have already budgeted for two more facilitators to already expand on their team. Our goal in three years is to have support comparable to these similar-sized divisions. All of our efforts are to ensure we are providing the most appropriate education to our students with disabilities. Carrie will now introduce our programmatic needs and our comprehensive plan for special education staff. Rockingham currently has six school psychologists on staff. Comparing the previous divisions we mentioned, Bedford County has eight, York has 10, and Augusta has six. National Association of School Psychologists recommends a ratio of one school psychologist to 500 to 700 students. Our school psychologist ratio is currently 1 to 2,240 students. There are currently four universities in Virginia that offer school psychology programs, JMU, UVA, William &amp; Mary, and George Mason, and all divisions are competing to get those school psychologists. According to Dr. Michael Lyons, Director of Clinical and School Psychology at the University of Virginia, "Education faces a tremendous shortage of school psychologists in the Commonwealth and across the nation while we observe a significant rise in youth mental health care needs. We see a need to add an additional school psychologist to meet our students' needs." The following positions added over three years will bring Rockingham County School's special education leadership to where colleagues in other counties are operating. The following staff positions will be housed in school buildings, not the central office. Positions in yellow are current positions. Year-one positions are in red. We are requesting one general special education and one adapted elementary instructional coach. One general special education and one adapted secondary instructional coach. We're asking for a float nurse coordinator for the purpose of overseeing school health programs. Year-two positions are in green. Adding another pair of elementary and secondary general and adapted special education instructional coaches makes the total a set for each side. A preschool coordinator who will oversee the Virginia Preschool Initiative, our preschool programs, and early childhood special education programs. Year-three positions are in blue. An additional set of elementary instructional coaches, general and adapted, and an autism coach to oversee instruction and programmatic needs for our self-contained autism classrooms. We view this roadmap as a fluid process to address staffing and programmatic needs. It is anticipated we may need to review our roadmap and address accordingly. Rockingham is focused on continued improvement, and several focus areas came from last year's Virginia Department of Education Special Education Audit. I will now share our programmatic needs. This year, we worked hard with Michelle Judd to increase four-year-old inclusion in preschool We are excited about the possibility of K-12 adapted curriculum differential pay for staff. We are excited about the potential for a second grad class teacher. We have fostered a strong partnership between our special education leadership and our English learner director, Alicia Correll Clark. We see a need to add an additional behavior, board-certified behavior analyst from the Virginia, or I'm sorry, the Shenandoah Valley Regional Program, bringing our B C B As to five. We are excited about East Rock High School hosting a high school behavioral support program, and then a return to the middle school program for multiple disabilities classroom that's currently housed at Cubron Elementary with students grades K through 7. An increase in speech-language pathologist, and an addition of a speech-language lead teacher who will also oversee the assistive technology needs in the division. An increase in alternative education options for our most challenging and hard-to-educate students. Continue to provide strong professional development for our special education teachers as well as our paraprofessionals, and increase our number of school psychologists. Chris, our fearless leader, will wrap up our presentation.
I do want to see if there's any questions. I'm just so proud of the dream team and the work that's being done. We think we're going to continue hiring folks who are less experienced career switchers. We've had a lot of success with our paraprofessionals getting their degrees. But the cool thing about those folks who come from another profession is they bring life lessons, they bring life experiences, but they don't have our background with I D E A, the law. So those coaches will help bridge that gap. They'll help our new talented people who may have changed careers or our paras get caught up as educators. So we'll continue working hard, and you can see we've got a strong team to support our administrators and our teachers. Any questions?
Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Bryant?
Could you get back with us on a breakdown on the first graph you showed there with the speech slash language, and give us an idea of how many language would be E S L added into that number?
Yes, sir.
Also, I'm guessing, Ms. Foley, are you a part of the grad class students? Okay, could you kind of talk a little bit about that?
Yes, sir. I think that Sarah's going to be presenting nationally sometime very soon because she's doing some really cool stuff, and V case is kind of the premier special ed conference, and she's doing some cool things. So we've got Spotswood has 18 to 21-year-old group who are just getting acclimated to life after high school, going out, doing career readiness things, independent living. But once they've got the foundation at Spotswood with Haley Scholl, they can go to Blue Ridge and become college students at 19, 20. And then from there, they're doing some of the same things, and they just helped us with procedural safeguards this week. We printed new procedural safeguards on the same color paper as the last revised copy. So teachers, folks, would be confused. They helped us make sure that there was a big delineation that people could quickly see the new version of procedural safeguards. They can stay through 21 years old.
Okay.
Sarah's working to get JMU to give us a classroom spot for next year. So we could be at Harrisonburg, we could be at Blue Ridge, and JMU next year and have kids going through college.
I just want to mention, I like the, I caught there where it said staff. I, I just want to mention, I like the, I caught there where it said staff in schools, and I do like that idea, not adding more at central office, but having them actually in the schools, serving and helping there. So thank you for mentioning that, and just want to say I noted.
I almost want to liken it to an AED when it's needed.
Yeah.
And you don't want me coming from central office to Elton Middle. You want the AED to be more readily available and in the building and available, and that's what these coaches are and these facilitators and these additional positions. Their immediate support, you know, as it's needed.
And just to be clear, was the, on the graph near the last page there, the first year you guys are advocating for, was that in green?
Let's see here. Yeah, see it on your slide?
Red.
Red, I'm sorry, red, okay. I see it now.
First year's red, and again, I don't think I shared this, but Dr. Shiflett challenged me when I came on board, and I'm honored to be the director, said that I need a comprehensive plan of this department. What, what is not a Band-Aid? What is something that's going to be all-inclusive and long-range? So this is, this is what we did. And so what do you do towards the end of a three-year plan? You start talking about the next one. So we know this might have to wax-wane move around as they mentioned, but we hope to stay close to the three-year plan until 2028, and then we'll be talking to you about another. But thank you all. We feel supported. Thank, thanks to the executive team, and we'll keep doing the work.
Any other board members have questions?
You mentioned the need for psychologists. Can we get them? Are they available? Because, I mean, there, there've been a couple, there've been several positions while I've been on the board that we're like, oh, we need this, yeah, we can't get, are they available? And are we competitive with them?
Good questions.
That second question's a hard one, right?
Some of these, some of these folks have better answers than I do. So Dr. Painter did work and go to bat for an intern. So we've got a psychologist intern next year. She can have a caseload of 30 students from JMU. That's going to relieve us a little bit, but we really need a true seventh school psychologist next year. Our pay's not as competitive with a couple neighboring school divisions. We like to think our climate culture's, you know, awesome and a selling point, but we certainly would need to do kind of a pay study of surrounding compensation to be competitive. And I'll be honest, they've come to me and asked me to make sure to advocate for that very thing. I'm trying to get more staff, so that makes their job a little more reasonable, but they, they could benefit from looking at those pay scales as well.
And these people could be in private practice, right? And probably make more.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody talk, speak to the point. Yeah.
When you're in private practice, you evaluate and hand a report that then has to come to the school and be reviewed by the child study team. And so, yes, essentially, I'm sure they have a caseload that they work through, but it's not as demanding. Timelines aren't of the essence, and yes.
And could we just use private practice people for this?
There are different credentials.
Okay.
Go ahead and share. Carrie works closely with them.
We do utilize them for when an independent evaluation is needed, and that's worked into Chris's budget. So if a, if a parent disagrees with a finding that their child is not eligible, then a parent has the right to request an independent evaluation.
But it's better, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's better to have them in-house because?
Yeah, I, well.
I mean, I understand.
It's a need to have an independent, that's, that's a need in any division, that you have to outsource it when there's a, when a parent dissents or disagrees with the finding. So that won't go away, but I would say the need for the school psychologist is, as you can tell, we've had an increase in, in students identified, and so in order for that to happen, they have to be evaluated, and that requires numerous meetings, long reports that need to be written, timelines that have to be met, so yes.
And we can contract, the drawback is that they're not invested so much in the school system. They don't know the kids by name, the principals by name, and they may say, I want to do this part of the job, but not this part. I'll do the reports, but I don't want to come to your meetings. And we just can't, we need our own people. So they'll do all parts of the testing and eligibility process.
Where did, Carrie, where'd you say they graduate from?
The university.
JMU, UVA, William &amp; Mary, and I think I said George, George Mason.
And I'm guessing we've reached out to them.
So currently, JMU has eight students graduating in May. Next year, there's a cohort of 11, and those people are not, are not coming here.
When we're, when we're looking at pay, what, what's the, what's the difference we're looking at?
They always tell me not to talk pay and compensation.
But I mean, at the end of the day, that's.
I mean, I think the thing is that pay scales are public knowledge, and we could do a, we could do a quick study on that.
Okay.
Comparison and get you that information, if you'd like, without too much effort. Yeah, I mean, psychoeds are, if they don't have enough social workers, some of the school psychologists in other school divisions are doing both. It's called a psychoeducational, and so that's more, that's, that's, that's more work as well. So again, I think we should look at compensation and really look at their, their colleagues in other divisions. And we can do that for you and just gather the data.
Thank you.
Ms. Cave, did you have any questions?
Those percentages that you were giving in the beginning that had gone up, autism and other things, do we, we don't have the, those percentages in this packet, do we? I keep looking and I don't see them. I'm just interested in having them. And, and were those percentages that have gone up in our school systems, or was that like in the country, or?
School system.
In our school system?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And those are today's numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Why do you think they're going up?
Well, a couple are staying steady. Great question. I don't know that since 2020, anything's been constant. I mean, in the last four or five years, we've seen more needs, and some of it is just continuing to work on our pre-referral tiered systems of support interventions to try and help students make up that, make up that, that loss so that they don't have to go through the whole process of being identified. So that would be the first thing I would say is let's beef up our response to intervention and programs before. Autism's on the rise nationally. We know more about it. It's an awesome, large disability that we need to continue to support, and so it's going to grow everywhere right now. Speech, growing.
Did I hear you say that autism is just being identified more? It's not that more people have autism, just that we're getting better at identifying it?
Yes.
Yes, yes, both.
Both, there's no known cause of autism. Once you've seen someone with autism, you've seen one person with autism. It's 100 miles wide, you know? So, but yeah, it's on the rise. We've got some great educators teaching autism, but it's hard to keep them. You'll hear some possibilities of needing to fill some of those positions as well, but we need good people.
But it's on, basically, special education students are on the, the numbers are on the rise everywhere, not just people moving into our area. It's not just because our student body is growing, it's because that population is growing for unknown reasons.
It's all over. It's been five years now, some of the kids from the, I mean, we're getting, we're still getting fallout from that in every school division across the country is. So it's, it's going to continue until we get, I don't know, through a complete graduating class of pandemic, I mean, and I don't know, it's just going to continue to grow for now is what we see the trend being.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant, and your fabulous team. I appreciate you coming this evening to present this information to us. Just a note for, for the public, for anyone who's listening, for your team, we're working on this. I think a number of these items, if not all of the items you've requested, are in our budget, and we are, am I right, Dr. Shiflett? I think, I think we've got the four curriculum coaches, the floater nurse, and a number of these, of course, like a number of these other program needs that you've identified. A lot of those are priorities for us in this budget, and so they remain.
Yeah.
Things that we're working on, and of course, it's always hard to balance the needs of the division, but this, this one remains a priority. So thank you for all that you all do, and thank you for coming this evening to present to us.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our list, Becky Tenell is coming, our supervisor of attendance, compliance, and Title IX, to submit a couple of policy revisions for us to review and consider.
Yes, nice to see you all. It's been a little while. Chair Horst, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board, you do have some policies that have been revised. There are four that are current revisions of Rockingham County policies, and then there's one that was a VSEBA policy that's been revised, and so it's now been changed over to a Rockingham County policy. I'm happy to answer any questions, and several of the supervisors that put these policies up for revision are here this evening if you have questions, or I'm happy to answer them between now and the next board meeting.
Board members, do you have any questions for tonight? I have one question, and that's on policy, let me make sure I get the right set of letters, GCBBA. That is the policy on adjustments in annual contract salaries for teachers when additional academic work is completed. I noticed we've crossed out some things. Tell me, can you help me understand, are we saying we're no longer going to be paying for half completion of masters and doctorate degrees, or?
That's the way I see it. I'll ask Dr. Painter.
You gotta have it in full. That, that's what we're saying, like, we won't pay for havesies, we're only paying for the full completion. Okay, there's only, we only currently do half for masters. Okay. Okay.
Would, that would be effective for the next contract, we're, right? We wouldn't all of a sudden start not paying this year for havesies.
I see. I see. For, for those of you that maybe didn't hear that, I guess I misread that because I looked at masters plus 15. What you're saying is, you, if you're teaching in Rockingham County, you've got a bachelor's, that's baseline, but we do give supplemental pay for having 15 credit hours or half of your masters. That stays. And then, of course, the supplemental contract for masters degrees. What we're doing is we're ending the ones that are like masters plus. Got it? Thank you for clarifying.
But my question was, if they have half their masters right now, and we pass this, will they, they won't see the pay decrease, if you will, until next, until July, or will that go in effect immediately?
It seems to me like if you've got your bachelor's and you're halfway to your masters, you're still keeping that supplement. It would be, I think the question would be.
Plus 15.
If you're used to receiving that.
Receiving it, my question is, if you're receiving it currently, whatever it is that we're eliminating, that's, is it, is it in your monthly pay? Oh, well, there you go then. Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good then, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. Board members, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
That concludes our information items. Next on our agenda, item number seven, committee reports. Board members, are there any committees that have a report they'd like to give?
I do.
Thank you, Ms. Cave.
So I attended the, on February 26th, I think it was, I attended the MassNet Regional Governor's School Meeting as the RCPS representative. I've sat on that committee since we came on the board, and so it's been a lot of information, but it's good, and it's always good to be able to travel up there and see what our students are doing. But there were a few changes this year that I wanted to bring back to you. This is not a change, but just something that I learned that I did not know, that I did know that we follow for governor's school Shenandoah County's calendar, but it was mentioned this year at the meeting that we follow that calendar for the purposes of them having school while there's an SRO in the building, and so I was really appreciative of that. I mean, I thought that was thoughtful, and of course, they would think of that, but it's just something that maybe the public didn't know, so I wanted to bring that back to you all. They did reduce tuition to localities. That was basically to decrease the fund balance. I think the, what, from what I understood, they, they never meant for that fund balance to be high, and so to decrease that and sort of level it out, they cut the tuition for each student, I think it was like $709 per student, so it brings it to 4,250. That's 4,250 per student. And the way that they did that, I think previously, the formula for figuring tuition was used, or was figured by using local composite index, and of course, every county's LCI is different, and so in all fairness, and I think this is a really great idea, they sort of leveled it out across all the divisions to bring that down. So basically, everybody, every school is paying the same amount now, so I thought that was a good thing that I wanted to bring back to you all. And then the other thing was that they are, this coming fall, I don't know if this is tentative, or it's definitely happening, we're going to start offering dual enrollment courses at MassNet Regional Governor's School. It will not be for the governor's students, governor's school students, it will be for anyone within our high schools, well, 11th and 12th grade. Yeah, so not just anyone, but this does not have to be governor's school enrollees, this can be any of our students, and I think that one or two of the courses that they're offering there was duplicate to what we already offer in Rockingham County, but then there were two or three others that will be other dual enrollment courses that our students can enroll in. So definitely, if your student's interested in that, check it out. The number that they threw out there for starting was 24 students from, well, I want to say Rockingham, but it may be, in each school division, 24 each. So, but that, I guess that number could change based on planning curriculum and all of that for the upcoming year. So, oh, and those classes will be asynchronous. I wanted to throw that out there too, to the public, and I think that's all I had. Dr. Shiflett, did you want to add anything? You're much more knowledgeable about this than I am, as far as the dual enrollment goes.
So we've shared the information with Mrs. Abernathy and Ms. Culpman. They'll be sharing it with the high school counselors, so they can, they'll have that information as students are working on their schedules for next year to see where it may be a good fit for a student who, who would want to add one of these dual enrollment courses to their schedule. So they'll, they'll, our counselors will have this information and be able to disseminate that to our students. So yes, thank you for mentioning that.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Dr. Shiflett, you're next on the, on the list for superintendent comments.
All righty, here, here we go. So the way I look at it, it's 13 days. To spring break. So it counts all. Now, that's provided that we don't have any snow between now and, and then. So, but as of today, we're planning for spring break. It actually will kick off with the Teacher Work Day on Friday, March 28th, and then the following week, March 31st through April 4th, will be spring break. And also, we're planning to have the holiday, April 18th and April 21st, around the Easter holiday as well, provided again that the weather cooperates. So just wanted to let everyone know that. I'll be communicating that with our faculty and staff, as well as our community, just so folks understand the direction that we're currently headed in terms of snow days. Also, wanted to say that Friday, I had the opportunity to go to the Smith House Galleries for the Art Vision, and I want to say that was very impressive. They collected four pieces of artwork from all of our schools, all 23 schools had artwork represented there, and to take a tour of the facility and see all of our students' work displayed is pretty awesome, and the things that our students can do. And I also wanted to add, as we've talked about musical season and attending musicals, at the musicals I've had a chance to attend, they've had an art show as well before or during intermission and then afterwards. And again, the, the things that our students can do with a pencil or crayons or paintbrush, it's, it's pretty impressive, and it's always just nice to see their magnificent work. And finally, I just want to say best of luck to the Spotswood Boys Basketball Team, as they'll be playing for a state championship on Saturday. for a state championship on Saturday versus Hopewell. So I hope they can bring this one home. I believe the last state basketball title in the Valley was 1993. It's been a while. So, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Next up, our school board member highlights questions and comments. Mr. Cross, we'll start with you this evening.
My brother Shannon was on that 1993 basketball team. So, and it's the last time they've won a state championship. They've been to several state championships and just haven't been able to get through at it. I know Coach Edwards is really looking to get over that hump. They had a big game last Friday night and beat a big opponent. And I, you know, one thing that a lot of people may not know is that they've done spectacular this year with, with less than what they possibly could have. They had a few student athletes that didn't come out and play this year that was on the team last year. And I remember walking by Coach Edwards' classroom at the beginning of the year, and he didn't look his chipper self than what he usually is. And I talked to a few other people, found out kind of a little bit what was going on. And I remember having Dr. Shiflett go out and say, see if you can go out there and see how he's doing. And I'm just so happy that they've made it this year as far as they have. And to see what they've done this year is just, just, just very incredible to make it to this state championship game. So good luck to all those on the team. Also, congratulations to our girls varsity basketball team. You guys had a heck of a season as well. And to have at Spotswood High School, two state games with the boys' basketball and girls' basketball, just shows you the programs there with, that we have with our girls and our boys. And it's the best in the state at Spotswood High School. So it kind of leads me a little bit into, I have, one of the things I've been doing as a school board member over the past three years is really advocating for my district and District Three, for, for better facilities. We are the oldest high school in the district, or in the division. And it shows when you go up to Spotswood and you walk the hallways, you, when you visit the facilities, I was joking around with some people this week, and I said, if we can't fix some of the things, maybe we just see if we can work with scheduling with Mr. Baylor and just have all home games so we don't see all the other facilities. Because when you go to places like Broadway that's had, who's had upgrades, has had additions and had things done, you just see the, you see the difference. And I, and I fielded those complaints with people, you know, the Lance Video Construction that came out last year was really nice. It's good to see the, what we're doing with all of our high schools. But when people within my division see that, they're like, wow, there's a big difference of facilities when you look at the other schools. And so I have been advocating for the past three years with the old board and this board with a couple of things there. And I was glad that the board last year, thank you for approving the ADA compliance when it came to the football stadium with the bleachers there. So a lot of people in my district this, right now are very happy with what they're seeing going on there with that. But we have other, we have a lot of other things. And to keep on telling my district, well, you just got to wait till 2027, 2028 until we do renovations. It's, it's difficult. It's a difficult task to do. And, you know, the concession stands in the bathrooms, up at the softball field, it's not ADA compliance because there's no bathroom up there for handicap folks to be able to go use the restroom. They had to get back in their vehicle and drive around the school and go into one of the bathrooms down in the school. And they have porta-johns up there. It looks like 1980s still at Spotswood with a lot of our facilities. So I'm hoping that in this budget, I know we're tight, you know, we, we talk about things tonight with special ed and the things that we have to fulfill. It's important. But I will say this publicly, as I've always said, athletics and public high, in public schools is very, very important. And I understand that we are number one academic. And then it comes to sports. But if you take sports out of the public schools, you take out a lot of good people. And you take out a lot of good, when I say good people, good students and teachers. And so I just want to tell my district that, you know, that they've been, that you're not seeing much go on over the last couple of years. It's not because of the lack of, of me trying as your board member representative. So I'm, I'm hoping to build, to work with the board and get a few things done for you guys in this year's budget. One thing we did accomplish as I came on the board is we did get the coaches raises up for the first time in over 20 years. And that was a promise that I ran on and campaigned on. And I was happy to see that we've, we got that accomplished. So I also want to say, congratulations, highlight two athletes this past, last week as well. Christian Hearn's is a senior at East Rockingham High School. He was a state runner-up in wrestling and came very close. He wrestled in the state championship title in his weight class. And he came up so close of winning the states. He's a state runner-up. And so congratulations to Christian Hearn's. I coached him in, in Little League Baseball in Elkton. And I'm just so proud of the young man that he's become. And I'm so proud of his character and his hard work and dedication as well. So congratulations, Christian. I know that you would have preferred to hold up that number one spot, but you, you've made us proud in Rockingham County. Second, Chase Smith from Turner Ashby High School. He also was a state runner-up in his weight class. And so I want to tell Chase as well, congratulations. I know it stinks as a competitor to, to be anywhere else but at that number one bracket there. But you, both of you guys and many of you other ones who came in fourth place in wrestling in the state tournament, you've made Rockingham County very proud in what you've done. So congratulations to those two. And my last thing, I'm sorry to take up so much time tonight, but I do feel like it's important for me to say the things that I've, I've said. I try not to take too much time up. The last, I guess I want to kind of direct Dr. Shiflett, if you would check with Sheriff Hutchison on, I was, I was going down the road today. We, last year, we put in the budget for four S R Os. And I know it's a priority for the board to be able to, we have 13 elementary schools that are still without security with, with our S R Os in our community. And as a board, we understand that that's, that's a top priority when, when it comes to school safety. And we got two last year out of the four. And I understand there's some, some reasoning behind that. But I was thinking and going down the road today, we have four towns within our school division. And so, Dr. Shiflett, if you could reach out to Sheriff Hutchison and ask him if there's any way that we, as a board, could partner with those towns. Those towns would be Grotto's, Bridgewater, and Broadway. And what's the other one I'm missing? Maybe it's just the three. Elkton, sorry, in Elkton. There's four of them. That would give us four, if, if, if they could hire an S R O, that would give us four additional S R Os at those elementary schools. They could be capable of seven S R Os if we were able to work with them, because they have not only elementary schools, but middle schools that are there. So it would be great to find out if we could partner with the towns in any way to be able to get, at least look at those four S R Os there. I know we have John Whalen in Bridgewater, and I'm, South River and Grotto's, Elkton Elementary would have one, and John C. Myers, I believe it is. So if you could reach out to him and see if there's, if that's a capability of doing, I would really appreciate that. And that's, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Ms. Burgoyne?
All right. So, past couple weeks, I have been at several schools. I went to my, obviously, my kid's school had a multicultural night, and that was a lot of fun. There were a lot of games. And specifically, there was a huge article in the Daily News Record of my, my sons, both of my sons, their preschool teacher, her husband is from Albania. And so they did all this awesome food, and it was delicious. And all this just really, really cool stuff. So we had a blast doing that. My kids were, you know how kids like, they feel like their teacher's just like their own person. And then when they find out that they have like a husband or a wife or kids or family, or they see them in public, they're like, this is just such a crazy thing that this person has a life outside of school. So they were so excited to meet her family. And then they were really shy. But we had a great time. It was, it was a really cool event that they hosted. I got to go to Cub Run for Read Across America. And I was, I thought I was just going to read for like lower level, but I got put in a fifth grade classroom. So I was like, I was a little paranoid because I didn't want to bring something that the fifth graders, who I'm aware they're going to be going into sixth grade pretty soon. So I really put a lot of effort into the book that I brought. And I brought this, this book that my kids like, that's a choose your own adventure book. And by the half an hour, you know, we went back and tried to, okay, let's pick a different page and see how, how the ending turns out. And so they had a blast. I don't think they wanted me to leave, so I felt really good about that. So I didn't want to bring something they thought was a baby book or anything like that. But we went to Sarah, or Ms. Hurst and I went to Broadway and J. Frank. And there is a teacher at J. Frank that I just fell in love with, Mr. Rogers, who's a social studies teacher. And I love that, hopefully, my kids will have him in the next coming years. But he was really cool. And he had asked me, you know, we're trying to find a place to do an archaeological dig. And I just really want to, he's, I think he's very outdoorsy. He's like, I want to get the kids outside. And so it took me about two hours to put a call for help out there. Does anybody have any land up in the North Fork area? And I had several people message me. And so we got them a piece of land, which I'm really excited about. So I definitely want to come to this archaeological dig. So if he's watching, I definitely want to be a part of that. And then the last thing I went to, Broadway High School did an international dinner, which this was my first year going. I don't know if anybody else went that's here, but it was so cool. They had a buffet, and it was put on by the World Language Honor Society. But there was a ton of students helping. It was just kind of like, they made it into a little restaurant. But there were so many people there. They did a buffet of food with all these international dishes. Did you go, Ms. Lor?
Not this year. I've gone in the past.
But it's amazing. And the food was amazing. It was overwhelming. But the really cool thing was, it was donation-based. And I thought, you know, this will probably just go to their organization. But they ended up donating all the money to an organization to end hunger and poverty worldwide. So I thought that was really cool. And I look forward to going to it next year. They had the band there playing music. Like, it was just, it was a lot of fun. So those are, those are my highlights.
We took Vegemite one year, so.
Did you?
It is not good.
Well, the food, everything I had was amazing, so.
Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Ms. Lor?
Thank you. Of course, musicals. I want to send a special thank you out to Spotswood High School for working with me so well, because they had my tickets for Friday, and I showed up on Sunday. But they, they put me right in the front, and I really appreciate that. And it was awesome. I love going to senior high school musicals on Sunday because you get to see all the kids, their last musical, and they honor the students. And it was really touching to see that. Let's see, this weekend, I was trying to look it up. We've got three musicals, I know. Hilliard, Mont Video, and is it Pence? It's Pence, that's right. That I've got to hustle around to try to figure out how to get to, but I highly recommend everybody try to get there because they are awesome. I also was able to attend Hawks Night at, at Hilliard where I met, met Mr. Rogers. And yes, yeah, I want to go on the archaeological dig too. That sounds like super fun. I also want to thank Ms. Hurst for setting up a retreat for the board. We did that this week. That was very informational. And then while I was out and about, I happened to be at Pence when they had a dog show. The students, the ag department, had the kids research, pick a breed, pick a dog, and research the dog breed, learn all about the characteristics. And then they made a cardboard cutout, and they decorated it. And then they took it through the gym. And they had like a narrative that the kids had to write about, like, this is an Australian shepherd. Her name is Poppy. It was so much fun. And the kids like got to show their animals. So that was a, that was a fun time. And then finally, thank you, huge thank you to our, our super, our dream team back there from S P E D. Chris Brant and Dr. Ashley Hoff, I didn't say it right either. They took me around to the house, yes. They took me around to the day programs. So I was able to tour Charterhouse and Elk Hill and Minnick School and saw the, the different programs. And I have a little bit better understanding. They took all day, and I have a little bit of better understanding. S P E D is hard. S P E D is a lot. There's a lot to learn. And, and it's really our most vulnerable students. So you really have to have a heart for S P E D. And I appreciate everything they do. And you guys are absolutely right. Keeping it in-house is super important because everywhere we went, Ashley was like, this is our student Bob, and this is our student Stephen, and this is our, and that's a student from Harrisonburg. But I mean, like, she knew. She knew the kids. It was amazing. And the level of dedication and love that our S P E D department has for our students is amazing. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart to you guys. Thank you for taking me around. I really enjoyed learning more. And I look forward to another tour very, very soon. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Ms. Cave?
I just got exhausted sitting here, listening to all the things that Rockingham has going on. My good Lord. Wow. But great things, all, all great things. I just wanted to say really quick before my highlights, I know, Dr. Shiflett, we always come at you with, hey, let's do this, and let's do that. And I think that's one thing of being a new, a new board. But one thing I guess I would say about is, is that we're going to be innovative. And I think, just going back to your idea, just talking about the, the town police department, something I hadn't really thought about before, and partnering with them, I mean, and I will not say any names here, there's a town very close to me that I, a few years back, probably two or three, I met one of the officers there. And I was like, oh, my gosh, I wish we could get you as an S R O, you know? So they do have capable officers there that probably, that love kids and that would probably do it. So I don't know what all the logistics of that are, but thank you for being willing to, to check that out. And, Dr. Shiflett, and I will just say, you know, the last words of a dying business, they say the seven last words of a dying business is, we never did it this way before. So anyways, thank you for being willing to check all those, all those different things out. I was able to go on, I think it was March 1st, it was whatever that Saturday was, to the Regional Spelling Bee, which is just one of my favorite events. I love spelling bees. That was held at Skyline Middle School. And the last two that it came down to were both Monta Video students. And I was sitting right behind Ms. Jackie Baker. And you could just feel the excitement. And I was so excited for her to have, you know, two of her students, you know, take first and second place. So that was, that was really great. And so congratulations to you, Ms. Baker. And I was able to, to do the Read Across America Cub Run. Thank you all very much for inviting us. This is one of the best things that we get to do as board members beyond all the business and all the, all the hard stuff, is that we get invited into the schools to do those things. Because I tell you, like, if we didn't get to do any of that stuff and didn't get some kind of like retreat to do that kind of stuff, like this, this would be, I don't, I don't want to, yeah, hard, maybe an impossible job to do. So thank you all for inviting us into that. And then last but not least, I got to go to Elkton Middle School Faculty Game on Tuesday, March 4th. And that was, they're so competitive, and I just love it. And it was a highly attended event. I mean, the gym was full. And they had a really awesome halftime show that I really enjoyed. So anyways, great event. Thank you, Dr. Holloway, for that. And that's all I have, I think. Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. I'll wrap up this evening's comments. Mostly, I think, just, well, I, I have a lot of highlights I could share. But I, I want to just put out there that one of my favorite things that I have been doing is going and reading in classrooms. I miss that as a former classroom teacher, just reading with kids. And so if, you know, just as open invitation to our staff members, if you need a reader for a special event, or just because you want a special reader, send me an email. I'd love to reach your class. I do want to talk just a little bit about budget and finance. We're still continuing to work through that process. There are always more needs and requests. And we can certainly justify every single one of them. They are all very important. But I, we have to continue to weigh them kind of in order, you know, you have to prioritize what we're spending our money on because we don't have what we're spending our money on, because we don't have unlimited resources. For me, when I look at this budget, I'm looking at a couple of things as like top priorities, and, and that's school safety, and then academic needs. And those are, I think our board is united on those things. We continue to work and weigh and measure what we can, what we can get pulled off in our budget to support our teachers and our staff and our students. And so it's, again, I don't, I think I'll say this probably every spring, how hard this process is. It's one of the most difficult things, I think, that I have encountered as a school board member. With that said, I would like to put in a plug for something, knowing that we might not be able to get it accomplished this year, but it is something that I felt would have been beneficial when I was in the classroom. It's something that I continue to hear from our elementary teacher folks, that, you know, we have really great curriculum specialists at Central Office, but I think it would be really great if we had elementary curriculum specialists to kind of supervise. These would be people who specialize and have experience in and are certified at the elementary level. There's a number of, there's some very major differences between elementary and secondary. And I think that it would be great to have elementary perspective represented at Central Office. I advocate for that. I'll continue to do so. I understand that it is really hard to add positions in this financial season, especially when I also feel deeply that we need more classroom teachers, more to lower our class sizes. We need to do something about elementary planning time to increase that for them. I would love to see literacy assistance in grades all the way through at least third grade, but in, you know, in perfect worlds, everyone would have one at the elementary level. I could go on and on and on about all the wonderful things I think we could do, but we do have limited resources, and so it is just something that I would like us as a school board to kind of keep in the back of our mind, see if we can figure out how we can accomplish that, if not this year, soon. So, anyway, I thank you all for coming out tonight. I don't believe we have any further business at this time, and so with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.